Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock and I do call the meeting of the City of Laconia City Council Meeting, December 12th, 2002, the Amen Baldic Council chairmans to order. First, I'd just like to say that the mayor is traveling, so I am Councilor Mark Haynes and I am the mayor pro temp. I, at this point, would ask Councilor Lippman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yep.
It's not. Pledge allegiance, Susan S. of the United States. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Lippman.
My pleasure, thank you.
Tonight, our recording secretary is Katie Gargano. Also, at the council table is our city manager Kurt Biati and Glenn Smith is doing Zoom and IT and everything else that he does. Is Councilor Susie with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilor, would you address the council and the fact that you are alone?
I am alone in a hotel room, nobody else with me.
Thank you, Councilor Susie, you're welcome.
Just saying that for his wife.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Cheney.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Councilor Cheney.
Here.
Councilor Susie.
Here.
Councilor Lippman.
Here.
Councilor Haynes.
Yes, here.
Councilor Fauch.
Here.
I got ahead of myself, Council staffed in attendance. I'd just like to ask the council to remind me that if we have anything that's up for motion, that there is a discussion taught with it before I just jump into taking a vote. So I would appreciate that, councilors.
You roll call as well tonight because of.
Yeah, yeah, and I will say you're right, Councilor Lippman, thank you, where everything was have to be on a roll call vote. Okay, as far as acceptance of the meeting, I was informed that minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 28th, 2022, was distributed to the city council on December 6th, 22. There are some changes to be made with the corrections of items 21A, 21B, 21C submitted by the clerk, correcting the council votes of four to nothing to four to one on all of those three items. Unless I hear anything from you, councilors, the minutes will be accepted as amended.
Would I ask 21, what was?
21A, 21B, and 21C. That had to do, Councilor Cheney, with the appointments.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Concerned in action items, we have none. Citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. This is the time that anyone can address the council. I just asked that you give your name and your address and address the chair. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gretchen with Taylor Community. I just am trying to come and give you updates on different things happening in case anyone wants to attend whether here or in the general audience. This week and next week, because it's the holiday season, we obviously have even more concerts and things happening on campus. So I just want to welcome you all to come to any of those. Tomorrow night, we have the Edgewater Academy Dance Holiday Concert or Holiday Dance at campus. I think that one is at 6:30. Wednesday night, the New Horizons Band will do their holiday concert at Taylor at 6:30. Thursday, the middle school band is coming for a 5:00 PM performance. And Friday afternoon, the Rockin Daddyos will be there for an afternoon concert. And if anyone really wants to come to our, we actually, I can't vouch for how talented they are because I haven't seen it yet. But we have our Taylor Community Taylor Tunes Concert at two o'clock tomorrow, where I think they're inviting everyone to come and join that too. So I don't know, I don't know the level of talented that, but I'm sure they're great. The other thing I just wanted to say, we've been really lucky in that we recently just had a generous Taylor Community couple, challenge the greater community of our vendors and our residents to, they're off, they offered $10,000 to expand the music series. If we could match that by the end of the month, and we're well on our way to doing that. So stay tuned for a lot of great, great concerts in 2023 as well. So we look forward to hosting all of you and anyone in the public for those concerts in 2023.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. No, okay. Pat, you're more than welcome to address us if you'd like. Okay. All right.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all of you for a beautiful display down at the park over here. But what you've done to do that is great and it's really encouraging to see the city be so involved in the holiday spirit. So thank you all for the support of that.
Thank you, Pat. We have no interviews, there's no nominations of elections, there's no communications, there's no public hearings, there's no presentations. Tonight, I'd like to just switch things around and I'd like to have council comments first. Anyone who'd like to address the council, Councilor Fauch.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a holler to the Great, Greater Lakes Region Children's Auction and anybody and everybody that had anything to do with it. It was a great event. We were able to raise over $625,000 for children's and family charities throughout the Lakes Region. So thank you for anybody that had anything to do with it.
Councilor Cheney.
If I might, two folks I'd like to mention. I think we're all aware, but perhaps others out there should be made aware that Counselor Hamill is improving and is cognizant now and I'm looking forward to seeing his smiling face sometime after the first of the year. The other thing I'd like to mention is the worst tie wearer in the United States is in the hospital in Boston, having some repairs done to his back. Mr. Sinclair will be back sometime next week in Laconia. I understand he's progressing, perhaps slowly, but progressing. He sent me a text and said that he was a crybaby and I take him at his word. And I'm sure the nurses there understand that perfectly. But I would also say publicly, I wish him the best and I hope he gets better real quick. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cheney.
I wanted to just comment on tax, tax bills and tax rates that encourage that people have questions about the valuations to make an appointment with the assessor's office. I think that, you know, a number of councils have had questions, I guess, just to affirm that the tax bills were based on a tax cap compliant budget. There's been. You okay, Bob?
I'm fine now.
So I think that spent some time looking at some of the cards with our consultant, with Counselor Cheney and Bob, can you?
Already did.
Thank you. And, you know, just looking at the, the sale, recent sales against valuations. I think if you, if you take a look at those, that understand there's been significant appreciation. Think we're going to have a little more of a detailed discussion of this at a subsequent meeting and just wanted to lay that out there. I know that an increase in your, your tax bill is not something that you're looking forward to seeing. But I do think that the underpinning of the, of the tax calculations are based on values that market is showing. I think that there may be instances where there may need to be a discussion. We do have appeals and some appeals are accessed, are successful. So if you're still not comfortable with where you're at and, and being able to, can look on a vision appraisal for Laconia, you can look up at any property in Laconia that, and look at the actual tax card. So if you want to look at comparables to your, to your home and encourage you to, to do that if you're uncomfortable with where you're at.
Like, if I could just add, I, I want to support 100% what Counselor Lippman said in the beginning. And that is, if you've got questions, the first step has to be that you get together with the appraiser and work through how they arrived at what they arrived at. There may be mistakes, but the only way you can find out is not by screaming at us or, or the next police officer that comes along, but, but talking to the appraiser and, and see if they can explain to you. And you may be able to demonstrate to them something they don't know about the property. But the first step, and, and there are many others, but the first step is you must talk to them.
And just to, to follow up on that, if we could, in terms of the timeframe to work on it, know this holiday season, if you can't get it done before, you know, next week or two, you have, I believe, until February.
March 1st.
March, excuse me, March 1st to be able to make an abatement request. So, you know, take advantage of the opportunity here. I think that you'll find the, that, you know, this is an open book in terms of the valuations that tax rate's based on. And I think you'll see, for the most part, that any of the assessments and recent sales in that category will show the kind of appreciation that, that the assessor came up with. So.
But, but waiting till February 15th is not the.
Correct, I would say.
Yeah.
Leave yourself some runway to, to have those conversations.
If you weren't going to stay home and enjoy the holidays, we understand. But the day after the holidays, for gosh sakes, get started on the process of asking questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Councilor Susie, did you have anything?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay. The mayor's report, I really don't have a report and I'd just like to echo what Pat Wood said. And I don't really want to single anyone out because I, I'm sure that if I mentioned someone, I would forget someone else. So, young and old, we really appreciate the effort that people have put into make the city glow. When I come around the corner on Court Street, the, the tree itself looks absolutely fantastic and they did a wonderful job as far as decorating the tree. The other thing I'd just like to ask is, just to say, and I'm sure I echo the mayor's sentiments also, is that we wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And for our Jewish brothers and sisters, Happy Hanukkah, their Festival of Lights. And for anyone that's celebrating Kwanzaa or Helted Christmas, we wish them all the best. And last but not least, if there's any people listening or out there that have service members that are going to be away from home, we thank them for their service and we thank you and hope that at some point in time, the holiday, some holiday will bring you folks together. Okay, thank you. All right, we're on, and is there any committee reports?
Just to.
Any liaison reports? Councilor Susie.
Right, just to advise, and I think we're aware, there'll be a, an appointments committee meeting prior to next council meeting on the 27th of December at 6:00 PM, 6:15 PM to go over some things before we present to the council.
Okay, thank you, councilor. That was the next regular scheduled meeting for the 27th. And that particular meeting for the appointments will be at 6:00 PM.
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Susie. Next, we have citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Okay, same on. City manager, Kurt Biati, that's, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just make one comment. You had asked about ordinance, ordinances for burned out, dilapidated buildings and what we're doing with that. And, and we talked about that, there will be a January meeting at the, we're looking to schedule for the second meeting in January, prior to the meeting of, of the government ordinances committee. So we'll start having those discussions on how we can adjust ordinances appropriately to, to address those issues. So that is being worked on. That was your question last time. Included in your packet is the financial and operational trends for December, so through November. I'll just go through it here with you. You see that the, the building permits are on par with about where we were last year, slightly above last year. So, and we ended the building permits season at the end of March with almost $49 million, so we're on track there. Fire and rescue calls are pretty standard. Public assistance, you'll see that we're actually about $6,600 below the year-to-date from last year. But at the end of this year, on, at the end of the month, the 12/29, we'll be losing the emergency rental assistance program, which is going to inevitably drop more requests for need into, into our hands. One of the things that we have, I noted in some articles that we've been reading is that state assistance for utilities, fuel and electricity are not being used to the level that they were expecting. So in talking to Glenn Smith through his welfare department duties, we, he discussed that he does use, maybe refer people to that, refer them to other agencies that help with that. So there are some other ways besides just through our welfare that we're trying to help people. And so we'll see how that goes as the winter goes along. It's still relatively early. Police Department activities, again, relatively unremarkable as far as any major changes for them. The property tax collection is going well. The second, obviously, as we just discussed, the December warrant amount went out and we're on average par with what we've collected so far. They did go out about a week later than, than they do sometimes. So that could have been a little fluctuation in the percentage collected. Motor vehicle registration, no changes there, anything special. Overtime, certainly break that down a little bit if you need to, but for the most part, it's staying on par with what we historically see. Parks and Rec, no real changes in their usage requests, down just a touch from last year. The impact fees, the numbers are there. Total in there is a little over 220,000. One of the questions that came up a couple of meetings ago when we did this was if everybody's using them in the timeframe that they have to, they have seven years to use them. So we did go back and check on that. Nobody's within danger of being too close to their end time where, where they can't use them. And anybody who is over the five-year mark, even at seven years to use, anybody who's over the five-year mark, we did reach out to make sure that they knew that we were going to be looking at those and they needed to, to, to use them as soon as they could. Fund balance, I mean, say, the trust balances are all, haven't really changed since last month. Boat taxes are, as you see, we're at about what we were last year. And we did end, I went back and looked at the ending for the year just to see, I assumed that spring was going to be your highest time to collect them and it was. And we were, we were over what we had budgeted for last year in a positive in revenue. So that, so I'm expecting that to start ticking up here as we get into the new year. Revenue and expenditures are average on what we spend and collect at this time. No real changes with the EMS but billing. The mayor had asked to break this down a little bit further. We're still working on that, so we will have that at some point. And it's that time of year, so we're starting to see the storm numbers are on there. And obviously, we've only had a couple smaller things, so nothing really to report there. That's all I have for, for this presentation, unless you guys have any questions for me.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. All right, councilors, Councilor Cheney.
I was wondering if we could ask the manager to add a, a column to his report on the number of code enforcement activities. I don't, I don't want specifics about particular house or whatever, but I'd like some idea of what is being done. And, and I suspect others have received calls from constituents who complain about things happening in their neighborhood and why isn't the city doing something about it? I think we are doing something about it, but I think it would help us if we just had some idea of how much activity and, and sort of categories, general category.
Easy enough, we can do that.
Not specific, but if we could ask that.
Thank you, Councilor Cheney. Yeah, that's a great idea. Anyone else? Okay. All right, under new business. City Council, this is in reference to requests for increases sanitary sewer rates. I am not going to read all of this since our Public Works Director has a program that he wants to present. The discussion is, the city council approved the last series of sewer rate increases in 2019. Public Works is requesting a 9.5% over three years. The council approved a 9.5% increase the first year and a three-point for the following, three-point percentage increase for the following two years. The last of the three increases was in February 2021. The Public Works and its consultant Underwood Engineers reviewed the sanitary sewer funds rate model this year to determine what rate adjustments need to be made so that the funds revenue will cover the expenses. Wes Anderson, if you would, the Public Works Director, would you like to address this place?
This, tonight's presentation will be two-part. I am doing the first and then we follow up with further details by Underwood Engineers, who is our rate adjustment, and it'll be by Keith Pratt. And, okay, almost there. Okay, so going to go a little overarching details in our request for the rate increase. Background on it, we've had in the last about 12 years, two rate increases, one in 2013, one in 2018, and both were for three-year increments. In 2021, we commissioned a rate study to be performed by Underwood Engineering to determine what needed to be done. We had to update it in 2022 to account for inflation, the recent numbers from the Winnipesaukee River Program and for the expenses associated with the capital improvement program, which are also increasing. Just as a reminder, our 55% of our budget goes to the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program and they have two increases that are scheduled to occur for the upcoming fiscal year, the $707,000 increase. And for 2026, it's approximately a $322,000 increase. And you were briefed by Winnipesaukee River Basin Program at the last meeting on the 2024 increase.
Yes, Councilor Lambs.
I wonder if we can back up a little bit because I just, to the very beginning, you had a slide, keep, if you can advance it one.
Yep.
So the, the bottom of your slide, update the information to account for inflation.
Right.
The what, Winnipesaukee River Basin Program cost and the capital improvement program. I guess in terms of how we approach financing, this is, is something that strikes me that all the costs that have to be undertaken to, to address the 50-year stuff is that, you know, similar to how we approach schools, school projects and other major capital projects in the city. We didn't put the entire capital project on current users. We spread it over the life of the expected use of it by how we structured, structured it. And I'm just concerned with high inflation that's affecting our, 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 our community and, and the state and the, the nation and with potential recession on the horizon. And, you know, some of the tax bills that went up because of appreciation that, that we need to take a more strategic approach in terms of not ignoring the cost, but planning how we introduce them so that they're not all put on the, the current rate pairs and then subsequent rate pairs who come into the city later get that 100% at no cost to them. And so I guess, as I listen to your presentation, that's where I'm thinking.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Lambs.
Okay, so that's, that's where we are with the numbers for the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program. Okay, so what we're proposing, and we'll go into more detail later, is on February 1st, a rate increase for each of the next three years. So if you consider it from a residential, single-family home who uses someplace around 98 gallons consumed per day to say 197, for the 98, for, for February 21st, it would be February 1st, 2023, it'd be a $15 per quarter increase. For February 1st, 2024, that increase would be a $25 per, and 50 cent increase per quarter. And on the February 1st of 2025, it'd be a $20 and 50 cents increase. So that's what we're talking in regards to scope of increase for a single-family home. And if you compare it to what it costs for Dunkin' Donuts or a coffee at Starbucks, you could say the first one is about three coffee, coffees per quarter and then go from there for the rest of them. So gives you an order of magnitude of what we're really talking about. So what's the impact if we don't do our increases? You have to remember, we have a requirement to meet the sewer collection systems EPA permit, in particular preventive maintenance program, infiltration and flow control and collection system operation and maintenance plan. We have to report our plan annually in April to the Environmental Protection Agency. So they will see whatever changes in our plan based on our ability to fund it and can comment on it. And depending upon what happens and what risk it presents, other issues could be raised by EPA.
Wes, if I could just stop you for a minute. You know, that sounds good, but give a, for instance.
The challenges, and I'll just use what we had for, for instance, and each one varies. Like there was a consent decree for Manchester because they had a combined sewer overflow. They came up to a mutual agreement and they're spending, I want to say over $200 million over the next, I want to say 10 years to separate their systems. Portsmouth had one in regards to how they were maintaining their sewage treatment plant. So that's the sort of thing that would result. It's not going to court, but it's coming down in agreement. So you don't go to court and what improvements you need to make to the system. And you just have to remember, our permit is for the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program and all supporting communities.
Councilor Lippman.
I guess I just reiterate, I don't know that the obligations have to be put on the current rate pairs in terms of there are some other strategies from a financial perspective that we could be pursuing, you know, the, the 50-year-old sewer lines that could cause infiltration and other issues. They do need to be addressed, but how they're paid for could be different than what you're presenting. So any questions, I'll be followed by Keith Pratt from Underwood Engineers and go through the details on the analysis of how we came about with the actual numbers for the rate.
Wes, the only comment I have is that I looked at the fact, the increases and over the next four years, that it's, I, I, I just wonder, are we at the point where we're going to just force people? I mean, you could look at people that are on a fixed income, okay? Yes, the social security bumped it up, okay? That's all been eaten by water increases, tax increases, fuel increases, electricity increases. I'm just, I'm, I guess I kind of echo Councilor Lippman. I, I, I'm just wondering if we're at the point where we're going to start forcing people out of their homes.
And I can't answer that question, but I can't answer. And I can't answer that question, but I can't answer, we have cost increases that we have to pay. I mean, we have to pay the same electricity costs that the rest of the single-family residents have to. I mean, we have actually in the city of Laconia more pump stations than the whole Winnipesaukee River Basin Program system, excuse me, not system, but the ones that the Winnipesaukee River Pro Basin Program manages. The only thing that we don't have that uh they have is the treatment plant itself. We actually have more miles of sewers than they do.
Question. Yes, um, thank you, Glenn. Councilor Suzy?
Yeah, my question relates back to what Henry's talking about. It seems like this agency or whatever you want to call it, um, you know, keeps comes back for the funding, but where's the check and balance to what's being spent? Okay, we as a city council, we go back to the department to say, wait a minute, let's review what the spending is. Maybe there's going to be places to hold back. What, where is that in this? And I'm going back to what Henry said and also, sir, what you said, and we're going to be forcing people out of their homes. We're going to take some more control or become more um financially conservative.
The challenge on that is fifty-five percent of our budget basically goes to make the payments to the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program.
But then
as us, we uh us being staff, we have no control over it. All we are, all the member communities are advisory to the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program. If we want to, from a standpoint, say, we can't live with these increases, then it's up to the City Council and city manager or whatever to work with the other communities, and then we need to have to go to the uh Department of Environmental Services Commissioner or to the governor and council in an effort to lower it uh before it gets to the legislature because they are the final approval authority of the budget for the Winnipesaukee River Basin Program.
So I I
Go ahead, Councilor.
Again, why should current rate payers pay a hundred percent of the cost for a pipe that's going to last for fifty years or a a pumping station re- rehash or rebuild that's going to last for outlast them? I I think that the, you know, the presentation we had from Winnis- Winnipesaukee River Basin convinced me that they're good stewards on behalf of the the system. The issue is how we pay for it as a city. You know, for example, we collect impact fees, right, that are related to um some of the costs that we're going to have to incur as a result of this. When we dig up roads and replace parts of uh what's the infrastructure underneath it. I I'm not proposing anything tonight other than I don't think we should go the way that we're going here. We should look for an alternative because I think enough is enough. Um, I think that the the um the issues have to be addressed. There's not not really, that's not for debate per se, maybe around the the edges, but not not in concept, things that are fifty years old ultimately do have to be replaced.
Majority of what we paid to the Winnipesaukee River Basin's operations and maintenance, not capital improvements. Capital improvements for the most part on the
Basically, you're saying no option, that we just have to stick it to the current. That's what you keep on repeating.
From my standpoint, unless the council wants to go to the governor and council and the legislature.
Wrong, you're wrong. There are other ways to do it.
I I think we can take a look at, and I don't think it's, I don't know if if I can't speak for anybody who sat in the seat before me, and I don't know when what Wes probably can. I mean, we can certainly look at you know, i- if if it's affecting our capital, there are other ways that we pay for capital uh improvements projects. If we look at it along those lines, we can take, we can look at that to see if there's if there's a way to spread that out longer. If that's, you know, the consensus of what, you know, what we're looking for, we hadn't really approached that um idea, uh, you know, but it's, we can certainly, you know, our direction comes, you know, from you, and we can look at that uh uh if there's options in there.
I think there are more things than that we can do, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, this is kind of the
I didn't mean to shut you off.
Okay, I'm I'm okay.
Thank you.
I I I'm no hurry.
I'm done.
Wes, back some time ago, you uh came to us about we have to video inspect sewer line.
Right.
At the time, I asked you to look into what it would cost us to include the one hundred systems that the city doesn't actually physically own. And and I just think in terms of adding more to these folks, I I'm hoping we can come up, we can add that in.
If you look at the numbers that we've proposed, that number's in is included in there, but again, it's operations and maintenance cost. It's not capital. So it's
I I understand that, but have you included, so you have included?
I have included that in the the rate analysis, as you can see from the agenda item. It's in there.
From what I from what I saw, though, you, it was twenty-one dollars per household that you had identified. So you're saying that 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 twenty-one dollars per household is included in your rate?
No, and if they did it themselves, if the Winnipesaukee, excuse me, if the private property owners in a condo association did it themselves on an average, if you take all the number of miles in the private association divided by the number of units, about twenty-one dollars. If we do it because we're going to have to manage it at our level, it's around a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars a year and every hundred thousand dollars a two percent increase in the budget. So again, it's a trade-off and it's operations and maintenance.
Getting lost.
Uh, it's, it's in the, it's in the numbers.
I I I understand that, Wes, and I, look, nobody sitting here doesn't understand that we we need to repair these things. I think what we're trying to say is let's spread the the pain out as as much as we can. I want to take care of the folks who pay salt sewer and water bills, but we want them to inspect their own lines. But I also agree with Henry that hopefully the manager can look at and see if there's some other way we can defer some of this so that it's not a sudden increase uh like this, but I I'm glad to hear that that's been included. So places like Southdown will be included in our inspections, is that?
If you've approved the funding and you enable me to hire an additional person. That's what it's going to take.
Can can I just re-ask, can I just, because I want to make sure we're on the same page on one thing you just to jump in, that hundred and almost forty thou- that's not included in these these rate increases though, correct?
It is.
It is, okay.
The
All right, I didn't think it was.
The the portion that's in there is in for it, but again, it's all portion considerations of what you want to do. If you decrease the rate increase, then I've got to go back and look at, say, what do we recommend not to do? And then you'll have to make the decision again, what are we not doing?
So on a twenty-one cents for the quarter, what portion of that is for sewer? I don't mean just the the hundred across the city.
The i- if if you're talk- talking what our estimate for doing it with the personnel and what we had to pay for the inspection pro- program, it was approximately a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. Constant year dollars, not count inflation or or anything. That's the level to provide that service to those people who live in private developments and private sewers.
But our paying city water and sewer bills.
Correct, yep.
Well, I I'm, I think Henry's brought up a valid
Oh, absolutely.
And and I look forward to the manager getting back to us on.
Okay, absolutely. Wes, if you want to.
If I could ask, maybe the finance committee could work with the the manager and the finance director on what some options are to peak shave, if you will, some of the the increase here that it's more than, it's all the extra quote cups of coffee that in property taxes in this and then that and that and that and that, it adds up. It really does.
Yes. Sir, would you introduce yourself, please?
Absolutely. My name is Keith Pratt. I'm the president of Underwood Engineers, and we've been helping Laconia with the sewer rates since about two thousand eighteen. So we've been involved about four years. And as Wes said, we just did the update uh that that sort of prompted this this meeting and the recommendations. And I will start by saying everything that we're showing you here is a background to get to the rates and the budgets that were being proposed. And there there are some opportunities in here to um Council Councilman Lemon's ideas. But this is right now recommended based on a hundred percent user, user-funded. So I'm listening to you guys and we have, we do rate work all over the state and be happy to talk about opportunities that can be done there, whether it's alternatives to impact fees or ways to put some things on general taxation because there are ways.
Thank you.
But this is just going to give you more of a of a background and in summary of what we did and how we got to what we did to give you a little bit more information. Four point eight million was your revenue estimates for two thousand and twenty-two. These are your current rates, the way the rates are calculated. We like to show this because half your rate is based on your your fixed charges and half the rate is based on your consumption charges. So your variable charges, which are based on your meter reads, represent about fifty-six percent of the revenue. That's based on your four point eight million budget or revenue projections for two thousand twenty-two. The rate, um historical rate increases and as they relate to inflation, um when we worked with the department, this was an important consideration. You can see the recommendations that were uh identified prior, nine point five, nine point nine point five. You you read earlier at the in their opening remarks, and those were down to a nine point five, three point five and three point five. Those targets were originally to expand your capital needs and capital program. So the rate increases over that period of time are recommended to be about thirty-one percent, actually about seventeen percent. Inflation was about sixteen percent and your operating budgets went up about twelve percent that time. So it really put, you know, it was tough to 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 get the capital program implemented that the way they needed based on on that. So the previous rate really was to support the capital improvements. The target was to maintain reserves in two two to three million. I know there's been an effort to build, to buy down or spend down some of the reserves they have that has happened over the last couple of years. Um, but generally, the prior capital year, ca- prior year capital expenditures didn't quite meet the targets. The other thing that's been a little bit of a challenge is your consumption is decreasing. So what you're billing to your users is dropping, and that's a good thing in terms of a conservation and so forth and the stresses on the system, but you do lose revenue for that. So we are seeing about a one and a half percent decline in your consumption historically. So we considered that into the rate. So while expenses are going up, you're selling to less people or less uh less users. Wes mentioned this, the dub, the the basin costs are going up forty percent over the next four or five years. So that is a significant impact to the to the budget. So that's been considered in the rates. Capital plan, here's an, here's an opportunity maybe to to talk about other ways to to fund it. Capital plan was identified to put into the model at eighteen point seven million dollars over the next five years, four years, five years. And uh they were prioritized by the department. And and what's in the model right now is only seventy-five percent of the priority one projects. So even though there's an eighteen point seven million dollar capital project identified, there's really only twelve million built into the model. Okay, so there's an opportunity to 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 get to to maybe look at other ways to fund the rest of the capital program. Because the model does not actually include all the capital that was identified right now. Um, historical and projected expenditures are shown in this graph. And really what happens around two thousand twenty-two is we start seeing increases in 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 capital projects, whether that's expenditures from from the budget or or your debt service. And um historically, or the last three or four years, we've seen about, we think about one to one and a half million, maybe at one point two million capital spending. Half of that coming from your buying down your reserves. You dropped your reserves, the other half coming from the budget and the revenues. There is some significant debt coming up too, so that's that is impacted. You can see in two thousand twenty-four, um, your debt increases are significant, and those are coming from your Elm Street and North Lake, Lakeport projects that have been uh we borrowed money to do that. This this chart shows you what the model projects over the next five years. And there's a colored coding here. There's the the red below and the blue above. That's really at your zero point. So whenever we're in the blue or the black, that means we're positive. When we're in the red zones, we're we're losing money. The orange bars each year represent operating losses. And so the mo- so this shows that if we do not do any rate increases and we operate with the budget that's being projected in the capital program that's been identified, we would lose money every year, and within three years, we would deplete our our uh reserve fund and actually go into the negative.
Quick, quick question.
Sure, Councilman.
In terms of um capital improvement, sometimes you would expect that that would help reduce the cost in terms of will it be electric, electricity consumption because you get more efficient equipment? Is any of that built into the?
Not directly, no, not directly. And um I I don't know that we've looked specifically at the capital plan to plan to say that they would translate to some of those savings. We've plugged in the capital plan. I think most of them are, a lot of them are your sewer and your SCADA projects and a lot of the utility projects, but no. I I know that we did not specifically carry anything like that in there. You might be able to, as you reduce the I and I, that maybe we could look at offsets to what you're being charged to W R B. Um, and sometimes we've done that in other communities, but it hasn't been done so far.
Sorry, could you repeat that one?
We have used cost-effective calculations to say, you know what, if we spend three million and we drop our flows by fifty thousand gallons a day to W R B, there's going to be a cost savings. So that's looked at a lot, but it hasn't been done for this model.
But it could be.
Could be, absolutely. I'd have to know more about the capital funds to see how they translate into what you think you could save.
I mean, it would make sense in terms of our prioritization to if there are
Yeah.
those in there to do those first as opposed to the ones that
Sure.
where it's possible to do that.
Sure.
To get the savings, to help pay for the future thing.
Right.
Kind of like when we, the city replaced all our streetlights with a different type of light that was less expensive to run, you know, that made sense.
Right. With the with the rate increases that were um shown by Wes, and I'll show them to you again in a minute. Um, the the uh we do still operate in a loss for a few years, but that's because we're still using some of your ser- your funds in the reserves. Um, but by the projections of two thousand twenty-seven, we would have hit our target reserve balance of just under three million or just over two and a half million. So that shows how the rates setting came to be. Uh, last couple slides, this, your current rates, uh Wes referred to the increases, and this sort of shows you what how they were calculated, but your current average user is ninety-eight gallons a day. We calculate that by taking all your residential users, dividing them by dividing the number of users um into dividing that into your total consumption that you sell to them. So the average user is ninety-eight. A lot of people use more, some people use less. Your bills will be different on what you use, but this is the average. So that somebody using ninety-eight gallons a day is getting charged four hundred and twenty-six dollars under your current rate structure. With these rate increases as projected, um, they would go up to four eighty-six next year, five eighty-eight the year after that. The
Nine ten, nine ten by twenty second.
Yeah, yes. And what we do show here on this chart too, this is an interesting one. Twenty-four, maybe twenty-five timeframe because the state averages go up too. All the other communities are going up too. That's about the timeframe we project you would be reaching the state average, and maybe by the twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'd be just above the state average. So right now, you're below the state average in terms of sewer rates. The two big bumps for uh in twenty-four and twenty-six are the 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 big adds from the the basin projects and the basin bills. This is now just showing um what the what the quarterly and monthly bill breakdowns are for that. So um your current monthly bill paying under the current rates is thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And then it would be a monthly bill if if these rate projections are playing out to be about seventy-five dollars by two thousand twenty-seven. And this uh Wes showed these earlier, the quarterly increases of about fifteen, twenty-five and twenty-one for the next three years if these rates are approved. And they also shows what that monthly impact would be here. So that gives you a little sense of of that impact. They look like big rate increases, but broken down monthly, they are a little bit more manageable. Interesting what you said, a council, and we do look at we don't use impact fees in the sewers arena. We use more what we call the system development cha- charge. That's more the uh industry standard. But that's where new users sort of buy in to get themselves on an equal equity position. So there are mechanisms to do that. We uh we certainly love to explore that if that's something the city would want to do. And then there are communities out there that do put certain things on the general fund. Whether it's if there's a stormwater component that's being a cost or an impact to your apartment, there might be justification there. Of course, capital projects obviously as well. So we've seen it um in other communities. But that was the, that was the summary of what we had done to work with the department and uh either between Wes or ourselves, we'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
If I, if I might, I have a question. Um, and I guess this may be generalizing, but what I read is they're projecting in two thousand twenty-three, it's all over the map as far as inflation and the whole where how do you, wh- what did you use as a component to come up with inflation rates?
We used, we used, she'll check, but we generally use a standard. One of the first questions we ask is, we just met with Exodus, what do you want to use, three or five? They said he's eight, you know. We use three in this model, three percent. It's probably not enough necessarily based on some of the inflation numbers Wes shared for me that you guys looked at at the city in the past year or two. But that was what was used in this model. The only time we don't use three is if we know what that line item is going to be, like, like the basin numbers we knew. But we've used three percent. Oh, she says two. So maybe it's a little bit too too optimistic.
Do we have a history in terms of the timing of capital projects and their implementation? You know, observing, you know, what happens at a state level in terms of sometimes in terms of going through the whole process of state procurement that, you know, there can be some lag there as you're working through doing bids and what have you. What's the track record of them being spot on in terms of a capital project being completed?
We reviewed that as part of the advisory report. They're a little bit optimistic, but not as optimistic as they used to be. The biggest problem will be is once they get a good idea of what the work is, is they got to translate it from what they initially thought it was to the new. So there's going to be a jump once they complete that first thirty percent design. I actually anticipate, based off of the track record, that their costs will actually go up for the twenty-six debt service increase, because what they're they'll find is that it's going to cost more based on the amount of work that needs to be done.
I guess when I'm getting at is something different, which is when the rates have to be match the investment. And if, for example, if you're planning for twelve million to come in and two years from now and it comes in year three, why make people pay for that? The year before is actually going to be coming online.
We just checked one. I think I have a a slide on that and I'll have. I can show you what we did in the model in terms, and I don't know if they will see that or not.
No.
And 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 this breaks Wes's rule, this text is too small, that's why I didn't show it to you. But in the model, we have the capital plan of when we carry the project and and what year it was projected. And so if the question is, is that the right year? You know, obviously, you'd you could move it around and that might have a little bit of an impact on the rates, but probably not a big one, because we tend to sort of average them to help sort of keep rates constant, adjustments sort of constant. So maybe a little bit to your point, but not the way we build the model, it may not have a big impact.
You you mentioned a few minutes ago about use another term of art, not impact fees.
We call them system development charges.
Can you share what in terms of the clients that you have? How prevalent that is and kind of how they go about?
We actually do have that. That's eight hundred dollars for every new unit that comes in. And it was approved.
So is that the same thing?
I'd have to look at the basis for that calculation. Whether that was established based on the existing equity of the system or not. The industry is sort of leaning towards, it was.
I don't think it was. I think it was more like kind of.
It's a, yeah, it's a good number, but more and more communities are doing it, and it's a simple, relatively simple calculation. We look at the existing equity of the system divided by the gallons capacity of your system, and you get a dollar per gallon. And the idea is you subtracted grants and depreciation out of it. So new users are buying into that equity that the existing users built.
Right, I mean, that's.
And it's different from an impact fee because you don't have to designate it to a particular project. You have flexibility in how you use it. I neglected to introduce Megan McCowen. She did a lot of this work, by the way, so I just I meant to do that at the beginning, and I wouldn't come to these presentations if you wasn't here having my back, so. Meant to do that, thank you.
Wes, I have a question if I might. Given where the economy is right now, do we have to approach it on a three-year basis? Or can we do it on a single year basis?
When we looked at it, part of it was in regards to how do we handle the Winnipesaukee River Basin planned adjustments? So we were trying to put that piece in. That's why we only went three years versus longer. And looking knowing we're going to have to adjust it for the fourth year, we'd probably start late the second year early in the third year to figure out what the adjustment needs to be. That's that's kind of sort of what the thought process was.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Sucey?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, Wes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, I would remind the council that as I read it and Kurt, you can, you can.
I make a motion to, if you're talking about this.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table until they get a little more information.
Okay, most motion to table is not debatable. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll on the motion to table?
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Littman?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel? Oh, Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion is tabled. Is there any specific date? A gentleman would like to take this up again.
I think the Finance Committee ought to work with the mayor. I don't mean to speak for the chairman, but I think we ought to work with the manager, I mean, and and our Public Works Director and yeah, we can take it off the table.
Do we, is there consensus that we need to motion to refer this to the Finance Committee?
I think we can work informally on that. And I think we should try to be deliberate about it so that we we get an answer for what the taxpayers.
I don't think any of us want to drag this out, because if we drag it out, it could get more expensive. Yeah, let's get it.
Okay.
Get it figured out.
Kurt, yeah, no, that's fine. I'll I will do what we normally do with this. We'll email committee and get a meeting set up so we can move quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is the ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash one six one dash twenty-five. In presence, Caesar one, mending chapter sixty-one dash twenty-five, the alcoholic beverages. The discussion at the June twenty-seventh, two thousand two, meeting of the City Council approved an ordinance adding a new section to chapter one sixty-one of the city's code. The ordinance allowed, quote, the sale of alcohol until two o'clock in the morning, according to state law, on Fridays, Saturdays and during motorcycle week through January first two thousand and twenty-three until such time that the license violates the state law or liquor enforcement rules and regulations. The timeframe of January one, two thousand and twenty-three was included to allow the extension of sales of alcohol into two o'clock in the morning to be in effect on a trial basis. Information obtained from the Laconia Police Department shows that there has been no any, there have been, there have not been, excuse me, any issues related to the extension of time and the sale of alcohol since the ordinance was approved. The revised ordinance omitting the language would extend sales until January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Under this attaches the council's consideration. Under state law, RSA one seventy-nine, colon seventeen, the liquor, the liquor commission sets alcohol sets the hours, I'm sorry, for alcohol sales is between six o'clock in the morning and one o'clock in the morning, seven days a week. A license, a licensee may sell alcohol until two until two o'clock A M. If the local legislative body, meaning the city council adopts the ordinance authorizing such sales. I would like a motion, please.
I'm I'll make a motion to waive the reading of this, but would like to discuss it.
Absolutely. Do I have a second? Counsel Cheney seconds, yes, discussion.
So I think that our intent was to, you know, we've we've been good so far, was to evaluate also through what happens New Year's Eve. And so I think this this hearing would be after that so that we could assess that full period. And we could then adjust the ordinance, either continue the ordinance or what have you. And I think that's that's the.
I think there's some concern that this actually ends at midnight on the.
It does not, it does not. We read it, it goes through, we we had, we went back and reread it to go through Jan, so through the New Year's Eve event. The motion that's proposed does kick it into January, so it's two meetings from now. Just we wanted to get the word out that, you know, this was, this was on the agenda, so.
Right, this is to schedule a public hearing January ninth, so it'll be after.
Okay. All right. We have three proposed motions then. I move to waive the reading of this ordinance and tie it and read by title law.
We did.
We did, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the first motion is on the floor. Madam Clerk.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Littman?
Yes.
Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The next motion is I move a reading, the first reading of the ordinance, two thousand and twenty-two dash one sixty-one dash twenty-five oh one. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Counsel Felch? Counsel Cheney? Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Littman?
Yes.
Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
Thank you. The next motion is I move to schedule a public hearing for the ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one sixty-one dash twenty-five oh one for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to any action being taken.
Motion.
Counsel Felch? Counsel Littman seconds. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Littman?
Yes.
Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is to request an appointment to appoint a city council representative to the two thousand and twenty-two Deborah B. N. As Award Committee. The city council annually presents Deborah B. N. As Award to a member of the community for their work with the youth of the Lakes Region. The award will be present, president, presented at an upcoming council meeting. Nominations are required being nominations are currently being sought for someone who has demonstrated a standard of excellence in their dedication to the children of our community. The B. N. As Award Committee consists of three members, one representative each, from the city council, the police department and the school board. The committee meets once after all the nominations have been received to choose a winner. Gentlemen, this, there's many ways to look at this. The chair can appoint someone or we can take nominations from the floor and then vote on it. I I think it's whichever way you would like.
Who did it last year?
I don't remember.
Sorry. Who who was I representing?
Was Counsel Cheney.
Counsel Cheney.
I think I've done it in the past as well.
She worked for me.
She worked with me.
Okay, do we have a consensus?
He's not here, let's make him do it.
No, you said you won.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Proposed motion, I move to appoint Counsel Cheney as the city council's representative for the two thousand and twenty-two Deborah B. N. As Award Committee. Madam Clerk?
You made the motion.
We need a mo, yeah.
I need a second. Counsel Littman, sorry.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Sucey?
Yes.
Counsel Littman?
Yes.
Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Counsel Fauch?
Yes.
Thank you, counselors. The next thing on the agenda is a continued discussion regarding the downtown parking garage.
Just in case.
Just in case. I will open this up to first the city manager.
Thank you. I will be very brief with this. So at the last meeting, I was instructed to work on drafting up a document for expression of interest in potential sale of the parking garage structure. When we started doing the work on writing that, we do have a about a eighty percent written draft version of it. All of the easements and deed-in work that we needed to do to do the renovation portions of the project have been, you know, gone through and vetted and and taken care of long before we got to this point. To actually finalize this expression of interest and make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted for what a sale would look like. We're still working through a couple of questions that we have with legal counsel. So it's not fully ready for you guys yet, but would be, we're hoping and for your next meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion around this, Counsel? Counsel Littman?
Is there any technical issues with the city not owning the the first floor of the garage and the?
That's what, that's that's the biggest piece of what we're doing. We have an easement, but where the ramps come down. Renovating it is easily, more easily, you know, how we're going to handle that, not so much at this way. That that's the, that's the biggest piece we're we're sticking on right now.
I guess, can you do a solicit, solicitation that that doesn't involve at some point some contingency for the people on the first floor to be able to weigh in on whether they would agree to it?
We are, we wanted to get all of our answers through legal first to make sure where we stand. And then, yes, then then yes, it would be, I think that that would be the next step. And Director Anderson and I have already talked about that, that, you know, at the next point would be having some of those conversations.
Thank you, Kurt.
So I just.
Counsel Felch?
In case I needed to volley something his way.
Counsel Cheney?
I just want to make sure this goes as fast as possible.
I I would, I would second that. I hope we don't drag our feet on.
No, and
And fairness, I'm fine.
Yep.
They're not.
Yeah.
I know they're not.
That's fine.
Okay, Counsel Littman.
Thank you.
All right. Before we adjourn, because there is, unless anyone else has anything else they want to bring up before the council.
Say one thing before we go on.
I I just would like to express my frustration with the back and forth between us and the state about the state school. I attended the vast majority of the meetings of the Lake Shore Redevelopment Planning Commission, which worked for a year and a half, two years, something like that, to design a a new state school property. All of a sudden, it's decided, never mind next Tuesday, we're going to sell the place. And we were never consult, we, the city council was never consulted in that. I've gotten a half a dozen either emails or text messages or one phone call from people saying, you've got to do something. Stop this because, you know, not enough due diligence has been done. And I'm explaining to people, and the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is I want to say it publicly. We can't stop this. We can deal with the with the zoning portion of it. But even that, this council may not have authority over because of performance zoning. So the council's not in a very good position, and we're catching flack for why didn't we, you know, do this before or whatever? I didn't know about it. I don't know about anybody else who knew there was a problem with this particular bidder. If there is, in fact, a problem with this particular bidder, but I'm just angry that this council in general and this counselor in particular is taking heat for something we have no control of. So thank you for the time to say that.
I appreciate that and I I very well know that you attended most of those Lakes Region planning, Lakes Region community development meetings, so I appreciate and thank you for that and I think a lot of us have a lot more we'd like to say, but I think we could just reserve that. I know I do, but I'll.
Your quorum keeps us from saying some of the things we'd like to say.
Counsel Felch, did you have anything along that subject? It doesn't have to be on that subject, but.
Well, along that subject, I think there's a lot more to it than what we know. And that's all I'll say on that one. And I was remiss to mention the and thanking the city manager and Pox and Rick for getting the lights on the tree in Lakeport Square.
Thank you. Thank you. Henry, here, thank you. Okay, there's only uh, this couple of housekeeping thing. The next meeting is December twenty seventh, that is a Tuesday. Um, the other thing I would remind the counselors is the uh, annual Christmas lunches on Friday. And um, I just want the counselors to know that I consulted with Counselor Cheney and um, I'm not sure I have the authority to do that, but if any of the counselors would so like, um, the next meeting, um, doesn't have to be an ugly Christmas sweater, but it can be an ugly sweater. I, I think, I think sometimes, I think we all take it, so, and we need to take this serious, but I think sometimes we've got to just have a little fun. So thank you, Counselor Cheney. Um, unless there's anything else, um, uh, I think we need a motion to adjourn or I just adjourn.
Yeah, just
I take then, um, meeting, Madam Clerk is adjourned at
We may have to revisit.